Okay, oh, good, Raymond's here. Thank you, Raymond, for joining. Don is on his way to somewhere where there's a hotspot because he's having trouble with the Wi-Fi at his house. So we'll welcome him when he comes. But to honor everyone else's time, we'll get started with the study session on equity for 50 minutes and we'll call that shortly after, shortly about 4:20. Take a break and come back for our meeting at 4:30. So, Marcus, I guess it's all yours.
Okay, um, let's see, get this up. Okay, um, do you see something on your screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're starting today with condition five, so you should have read, I believe it is chapter nine from the Courageous Conversation book, which is on that fifth condition. I know that he has a reason for presenting all of these chapters in a certain order, but this is one that I always wished came earlier in the sequence. Nevertheless, we're going to dive right in. Condition five, subtitled "What Do You Mean By Race", is really focused on establishing agreement around a contemporary working definition of race that clearly differentiates it from ethnicity and nationality. And with each of these sessions, I want to kind of start off by talking about where we've been. As I try to reiterate each time, we are building skills for having these conversations. So everything that we have talked about before, we're supposed to continue walking in what we talked about before and add this new learning onto the talk. And so where we started was condition one, focusing on personal, local, and immediate. So that's thinking about ourselves, our own racial journeys, how race is impacting our lives and how race impacts the way that we see things, are the lens that we bring to the work. Condition two, really isolating race. We want to continue to isolate race, not drifting off to a different topic, but staying. We're building our capacity to have courageous conversations about race, which will then enable us to have a lot of other conversations with greater ease. Normalize social construction, recognizing that different perspectives, experiences have influenced us all the way to where we are today. And so just normalizing the fact that two people can see things very differently based on their background and experience and what they have seen and encountered. And we want to be able to access the wisdom from all of that. And then last week, when we met, we were looking at monitoring the agreements and conditions and establishing parameters. So we talked a lot about the idea of white talk versus color commentary. And one of the big takeaways there was that with the fact that we work as school leaders or school teachers in settings where they are predominantly white, people who are working in those environments, that if we're not intentional about how we set up the conversation, then the characteristics of white talk will dominate the conversation. And so we have to be aware of the way that white people and people of color tend to engage in these conversations differently and create conditions to where those two approaches can be balanced out so that one approach doesn't take over and dictate the way that the conversation takes place. And then today's learning is around establishing agreement around a contemporary working definition of race that is clearly differentiated from that of ethnicity and nationality. So I'm wondering if someone could read this. I had a principal send me this article today. And she said, "This is really lining up with what we've been talking about." And so I pulled this quote out of it and I'm wondering if someone could read this aloud for us.
I could do it if I could see it.
Can you see it?
Well, it's small-ish.
I can read it. It's big on my screen. If that's okay, Martha.
Sure, go ahead.
Reminder about our "why". "If we don't understand someone, we can't have a eureka moment by imagining his perspective. The greater the distance between us and an adversary, the more likely we are to oversimplify their actual motives and invent explanations that stray from their reality. What works is not perspective taking, but perspective seeking. Actually talking to people to gain insight into the nuances of their views. That's what good scientists do. Instead of drawing conclusions about people based on minimal clues, they test their hypothesis by striking up conversations."
Yeah, so when I read that this morning, I was like, "This is exactly what we're talking about." And it comes from a book called Think Again by Adam Gann, "The Power of Being What You Don't Know." But what he's saying here is it's not enough for us to try to imagine how someone else thinks. We're not very good at that because we oversimplify how somebody else thinks and feels based on a narrative that we already have. But what needs to happen is we have to actually engage in conversation with people who think differently than us and really seek to understand their perspective and their point of view. And so, but this was really powerful and really, this is the why behind focusing so much on engaging in conversation and building our skills to be able to have conversations. Does anyone have anything you wanted to say about this before I push forward? Okay, um, so the chapter has a lot to it. In the beginning, it brings up the question of what is race? It presents a brief history of race. It talks about this idea of an American racial binary. It mentions eugenics, white lie. It talks about history in housing, health discrimination, all that sort of thing. And then it talks about how that history impacts public education in some ways. And then it ends with this idea of a working definition of race and defining racial identity. And so that's where we're going to spend our energy today is on that last piece of a working definition of race. But I wanted to give you the opportunity, if there was something that stuck out to you in the chapter that you really wanted to bring to surface or was burning, or if you had a general reaction or where you found yourself on the compass, give you some opportunity to just share kind of generally how you reacted to the chapter. I'll start with Raymond.
Sure. So it kind of, I mean, I really enjoyed reading the chapter, right? And basically what I understood is that we need to go beyond the physical attributes of physical appearance and get to know individuals for who they are, unique human beings, and not judge or treat people based on the color of their skin. So that's kind of what I got. And even the quote that you put up is we need to strike up that conversation, learn more about them, about who they are, you know, their culture and their customs and their values, their beliefs, traditions, all those type of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I had a couple of thoughts as I read this chapter. First, the intro quote by Jackie Thompson. I really, I identified with what she said. I feel a lot of the things that she described. You know, I'm certainly proud of my race and culture and ethnicity, but it also, it does make me feel cautious and depending on where I'm at. There's been, and who I'm around. A couple of years ago, there was a comedian in Yakima that my husband really liked. And so we bought tickets and go. And as I'm walking to, as we're walking to our seats, I realize that there is not one brown person anywhere in the building. And there was like several hundred people there. And it was just really weird to be in Yakima and not to see any brown people. Because usually, like every other person in Yakima is a brown person. And so it just felt really weird and I felt uncomfortable. And I kept looking until like the guy behind me was a brown person. So it's like, hey! So like I felt like a connection with that person because it was just very weird to be in a place where there weren't any other people of color. It was just an interesting experience in growing up. When I was, like I was in FBLA or something in seventh or eighth grade. And I went to Spokane for some competition and I placed within the typing contest. And so we go to this event for the winners and I was the only person of color there. And it's just always uncomfortable when people turn and look and, you know, "What are you doing here?" And it's just, that feeling sucks, you know, to be blunt. So that, the first quote that she said, it really resonated with me. The other comment, I'll just say quickly, is that I've always struggled with the term "race" because I don't know what my race is. I am, you know, Mexican-American, I'm Chicana. But that's not a race per, you know, like the government forms that you fill out, you know. And so I've always struggled with what to pick and so I usually just pick "other." You know, usually I identify more with my indigenous side, but I know that that's not what, you know, the forms the United States are asking for. If, you know, if you say that you're Native American, that means you're United States Native American, not like indigenous Mexican. And so I've always struggled with how to answer those forms. And I don't like saying "other" because I don't want to be an "other." So it's just an interesting way to, I've always just struggled with the definition of my race in particular.
I'm on over by the district office outside. But I too like the Jackie Thompson's part about artificial barriers he finds us and talk about race. And many a times I find myself, when I'm in a predominantly white meeting, having to adjust and do it pretty good because I had opportunities growing up earlier and coming from a mixed multicultural family. And then part of the article, when they talk about mulattoes, that's my family. And I can relate to Graciela saying that when you fill out applications, sometimes I would put "other" just to mess with people. Because they would assume that I'm African-American, which I have African-American blood in me, but I can relate to my French side, my Spanish side, my Native side. But, you know, when I was growing up, we had to check "Negro", you know, and it was, you know, and when you think about Negro, it comes from Nigus, which means king, which is Erychiar and Ethiopian. But it's, you have to be versatile. And I think that I have that versatility. And I thank God for that because, you know, coming from a multicultural family and background, you know your history, your heritage, and, you know, your nationalities. Virtue with several nationalities. And you get bought pieces of it all and see how it all mashed together. And, but this is an interesting chapter, very interesting. It brought, I start flashbacking to when I was a kid, growing up in Louisiana, down in the bayous and stuff. Yeah, it's interesting.
Yeah, I'm gonna read that quote since we mentioned it and everyone doesn't have access to the book. So from Jackie Thompson, it says she's a professional staff developer at Davis School District in Farmington, Utah. But the quote said, "Race is an artificial barrier that defines us. Race makes us feel proud, but it also makes me feel cautious. I try to go through my day without focusing on it, but I am constantly aware of it. If I am in a place where no one looks like me, I am self-conscious. When I am surrounded by racial diversity, I feel comfortable. Race makes me feel good when I think of my ancestry, but it makes me feel bad when I think of division. It is the package that we come in, but it does affect our interactions with others. Race plays a big role in our lives and we have to get beyond those barriers." And so, yeah, I think that was also a quote that stuck out with me as well as being really, she really put it in perspective. Did anyone else want to say anything about the reading before we go into kind of our activity for today?
As I was reading that beginning quote, it struck me that, I grew up in New Hampshire, which is really, really, really white. And there was one time here a few years ago, I was back there visiting my parents and I had become so used to a community with diversity that I almost felt a little bit out of place in this really white community where there were no children of color, there were no parents of color, there were no families of color. Everybody was white. And I felt almost out of place because that wasn't the, that wasn't what my normal was anymore. And I thought back to that when I was reading her paragraph, that quote that you just read, Marcus, and how we can become accustomed to a community of diversity or whatever community it is that we're in for a while, you become accustomed to that and that becomes your new normal. And then when that changes, it changes you. And it changes your outlook. I just found that interesting.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely. Living in Quincy last year, I went to the grocery store in Afreeca in Safeway and saw another black man at the grocery store. And he came up to me and we shook hands. And it was like, I mean, we didn't have to have a statement. We didn't say like, "We're shaking hands right now because we're black." It was just very clear that like, we were excited to see another black person. I always do the head nod when I see another black person anywhere. But living out on this side, it's been very different. When Superintendent Green first introduced me to Reverend Davis and they had a student there that was also African-American, I was just overwhelmed, excited that there were three black men in the same space at the same time. Because I hadn't had that experience on this side in quite a while. So it was, you know, it just, when you haven't been able to take that for granted, that you're going to be around people that look like you, it feels some, you definitely feel something when you have not been able to just take that for granted. So we want to push ahead and talk about these three Cs. And so just to make sure we're on the same page about what was being said, that first C was corner and talking about nationality. And so in the chapter, he says, "It designates citizenship, either by birth or by naturalization, as specified on a government-issued passport." And then the second C being culture or ethnicity. The phrase that I pulled out here was, "When compound descriptions are used to describe ethnicity, the two words represent the balance between the two cultures or perhaps an emerging third culture or cultural hybrid." And so he was really talking about kind of, in that, for me, I would say, the difference between being African-American or being someone, a Somali-American, who, someone who immigrated more recently, right? Has a very different cultural experience than what I have, even though both of us racially would identify as that third C, color, black. So this third one is race. And he says, "For the most part, race is the meaning affixed to the noticeable melanin content seen in the skin, hair, and eyes. Those who are rich in melanin are said to be of color or indigenous, whereas those who have the least amount of melanin are defined as white." So is there any questions or thoughts about the distinctions he's making here with these three Cs?
I'm just kind of, I was struggling with the culture and ethnicity tying those two together. So I just see culture as, you know, knowing how to behave, how to act within a certain group of people, you know, what are the norms, the rules, and so forth. Ethnicity is more, you know, I'm not sure how those, how to answer that question when we come to it, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Well, what would you, what would you say is ethnicity then?
Um, it's, it's more, yeah, it's more like our, well, like, you know, I, my background, I'm of Mexican descent, that would be ethnicity for me. I don't know how to explain that anymore than that, but that's how I would see ethnicity. So that's why I wanted to clarify that.
So I think with culture and ethnicity, and the reason that he's using these kind of interchangeably is he's saying that there are certain, the cultural experiences that are tied up with one's ethnicity. So as a, you may have certain experiences, like you said, your ethnicity is, you described it as Mexican-American. Is that what you said?
Yeah, of Mexican descent.
Okay, so of Mexican descent. But what would you say, what's your corner, your nationality?
Also, yeah, that's different. I'm an American citizen, so, United States citizen, yes.
Right, and so--
That's more nationality.
A person of Mexican, what would be common to you and a person of Mexican descent who is living in Mexico right now and has still been living in Mexico?
Yeah. Okay, so I see that as culture, right, as a culture piece.
Right, and that's what he's trying to say is that the culture piece as distinct from the nationality piece are those pieces that would follow with you regardless of where your nationality is because of that shared other experience.
Yes, okay.
And so he's describing that as culture or ethnicity, being the same, being the same in that sense. Any other questions or thoughts about this? And so I really thought in the chapter, when they have this visual here where it shows kind of this star at the intersection of race, ethnicity, or nationality, or the intersection of corner, culture, and color, that's what our real racial identity is. And I think what Raymond opened with is really powerful is that in order to find out what, where we're at in that star, there's some conversation that has to take place. If we don't have the conversation, people are just really making a guess based on what they see. And what they see is the race piece, right? And so I have, I have brown friends who are not from Mexico, but when people talk about them or describe them, a lot of times people will call them Mexican. Because they have not had any conversation with them to find out anything else, they just assume brown means Mexican. But really, the dialogue is how you find out that there's, there's more nuance to who we are than just what you initially see. So for the implementation exercise, there's these questions. And I'm just gonna, I want everyone to respond to the second one. But did anyone find that your definition of race, and Graciela, I'm kind of interested because you, in your, what you started talking about seemed like it was alluded to this. But I'm wondering, did anyone's working definition of race change as a, as a result of this reading? Like, the way that you were defining race prior to this reading, was it impacted at all by this reading?
I guess my working definition of race really didn't change. I think about, one, race is fake, right? It's not a real, you know, it's not a real genetic, or, you know, it's not, we're all human, so it's not a real thing other than what society has created. But within what the United States or what society defines as race, you know, there's African-American, or I guess there's black, there's white, Native American, and, you know, Asian, maybe. I don't know what all the other categories are, but those are the definitions I've seen. And there's never been one for, that I have easily identified with. So it didn't change my definition, but--
How do you define, based on this reasoning, how would you define your race?
Based on the selections that are usually available to me on a form, it would be "other."
Well, I'm saying, based on how Lynn Singleton is defining race, how would you define your race? Let's say, let me ask the question more the way that he designed it. What's your personal corner, culture, and color? So what would you describe as your corner?
Corner would be US-American.
Okay, and then what about culture?
Culture would be, I guess I'd say Chicana.
Okay, and then what about color?
I'd say brown, or I guess I'd say indigenous.
Okay, what about anyone else? We haven't heard from Norm. Norm, what are your, what would your three Cs be?
Okay, well, my corner is American. US citizen, always have been, even before I was aware of it. And then ethnicity would, I guess, would be white. And what's interesting, when I hear other people describe it, when you grow up white, you know, white dominant culture, you think less about race until you get older and become aware of it. I think when you're a minority in a dominant culture, you become aware of it sooner. But I would, I would say color is white, culture is American. And with a strong, probably Northern European background, my ancestors came from England and Scotland and have been traced back to there. So that's part of my heritage.
I got mixed up in there. So can you do it again? Just give me the short synopsis version, what would you say?
Okay, American. Culture or ethnicity would be American with a Northern European history and background. And races would be white or Caucasian, which makes no sense to me because Caucasian is from the Caucasus, which has nothing to do with-- I don't know where that title came-- See, that's part of the, race is such an artificial construct. But the world defines itself so much that way that, but it's a social construct. There's nothing biological or genetic about race. It's purely a social construct. So we've certainly created a mess for ourselves.
Yeah, so we're not going to use Caucasian because we're using a color descriptor, so--
Yeah, so I would be white.
Yeah, so we'd say American, and then ethnicity is white American or European-American, and then color is white. Sorry, let me, Martha, what were your three Cs?
Mine were the same as Norm's.
Okay, and Raymond?
Now, mine's a little bit more complex. I don't know, I like to complicate things, so--
Am I, go for it.
Okay, yeah, just hear me out here. So I've kind of, you know, like Graciela started off as a Chicano, right? Part of a member of Aslan, right? And then being Mexican-American, being a member of both Mexico and the United States, to American and Mexican descent, being a member of the United States, right? So that's the corner. But it's even more complicated than that. I also identify with Los Angeles, right? That's part of my identity, Compton, Watts, you know, Wapato, Yakima. All those are part of my-- That's part of my identity, Compton, Watts, you know, Wapato, Yakima, all those are part of my identity, you know? So I think we're just a little bit more complicated than just the national, but we're just talking about nationally. So culture, um, you know, my language, I speak Spanish and English. I practice Mexican folk medicine. My, um, you know, some, there's some also some, you know, those healthcare practices, stuff like that, food. I've still practiced all those types of things. Um, you know, the music and so forth. Let's see, and then you said the color. Um, so this is where it gets a little confusing as, as Graciela mentioned, right? In essence, the government indicates that we are white. Our, our people of Mexican descent or Hispanics are white. That's the checkbox we have. Uh, and then where ethnicity is Mexican or whatever, so. But I found out I'm fifty percent Native American and like forty-two percent Spanish and Portuguese. And about seven percent of African, uh, Sub-Saharan African descent, so what do I put? And it may sometimes I put others, sometimes I put white, sometimes I put whatever, so those are my three, um, corners or Cs.
I'm pushing us to kind of overcome the problem of the form, right? So what, what I'm saying is, Glenn Singleton is saying, in order to understand your, your racial identity, you're looking for the intersection between corner, so where, where you actually have citizenship? Because that has certain influences over you. Culture and color, which is the piece that someone else looking at you imposes on you and the way they treat and interact with you based on what they see. Right? So when we, the form is a problem, I'm acknowledging the form being a problem. But you are not limited in what you are based on what's on a piece of paper. You are what you are, and then we can do this training with the people that design the form and they can fix the form, right? So what I heard you say is your corner is American. Your, uh, or the United States, right, is your corner. Your ethnicity, Chicano or Mexican-American. And then color is brown. People interacting with you are gonna come, they see a brown man. Whatever assumptions they bring to that, that's what they, that's how they interact with you. So I'm wondering if that makes sense in terms of the way that the reading is trying to present it.
You know, I'm having trouble with that if, you know, if you were to see me on my motorcycle, you're not gonna see my color, you're gonna see leather, you're gonna see something different, right? You're gonna see my, my military patches. Probably the first thing you're gonna do is say, he's part of the, the motorcycle culture and he's a veteran, first thing. So, I don't know, I'm having trouble with.
But if I ride your motorcycle, if I ride your motorcycle and wear the same gear, then you're gonna see the same thing that you just described too. So I'm not asking you to describe what you look like in a motorcycle helmet and in a big leather suit. I'm asking you to describe what people see, like, who are watching this and looking at your face on a video screen. And they see a brown man, right? And so they're gonna interact with you in that way, they're gonna make assumptions about, if I don't talk to you, they're gonna make certain assumptions unless they've trained themselves not to make certain assumptions, and so.
Yeah, that's part of human nature, right? We see somebody, we categorize them, we put them in a box and we do all that. Yeah, that's, I agree with that.
Me with what you, what I'm saying is, I agree a hundred percent with what you said at the opening of this, which is that we have to get beyond that, but we need to know those, we, we need to know those three pieces about ourselves in order to even do that other under, underlying work, right? So I have to know, like, um, my three Cs. And, and then hopefully people will wanna get to know more than the one of the three Cs that they see. But it's, it's unfortunate that we live in a world where that color one, that's, sometimes people just, that's enough. And they stop there and they don't, they don't want to explore, understand different. But we can't be in denial about the fact that people see what they see and they, and they stop there. Um, who did I miss?
You missed me.
Okay.
I'm, uh, US. I'm American, can you hear me?
Yeah, I hear you.
Uh, my, my ethnicity is French, uh, Spanish native. Uh, my race, by looking at me, I'm, uh, black, African-American, that's what they would see. But, um, I, 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 I too use other a lot of times because it's, it's the, um, when, when you talk about, uh, color, it's, uh, it could be Creole, it could be Cajun. Uh, from where I come from, uh, it's different shades, but I identify as, uh, African-American.
Well, what, and I think one of the things that he's trying to really push us to do is to make sure that we're not using these terms interchangeably. So after half of, of page one seventy-eight, he's saying, the fifth condition of courageous conversation helps us to avoid the tendency to use identity terms interchangeably. So to me, African-American is clearly an ethnicity, right? It's, there's cultural traditions that connect with that. That is a, it's a cultural tradition of African-American. Race is just the color.
Okay, black, black.
Yeah. And so it gets simple if we allow it to, right? If we allow it to. And so my first question was, has your, um, definition of race been impacted or changed as a part of this reading? And I'm hearing the no's, but I'm gonna push you for the yes. Because when people treat you according to your race, it's based on that one word. Black, brown, white, it's, that is how they're interacting with you. And when they get to know you and find out about your cultural traditions and your background and all of those sorts of things, maybe something changes in that, but there is that initial lens of what we see. Can I go ahead?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with that, Marcus, and I do say black. But it, from doing this book, it has changed. And it, it, it always has changed with me. Because I, 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 I can maneuver.
Yeah.
If that makes sense, you know, because I grew up that way, right? I'm, I'm not stuck on, uh, where am I? I could, I could, I'm like a chameleon, I can go either way.
Yeah.
And, uh, that, that comes, and, and, you know, that comes from being in the music business, that comes from being in the ministry. You know, you had to have, you had to have these different masks to put on. Right?
Yeah.
And, and I, 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 I could do that. Um, and, and, and it, this has changed it, my, my perception of how to deal with other folks. That, that made me stuck.
My, um, my story about the grocery store in Afraida, I did see a guy with black skin. And we walked up to each other and we're shaking hands and appreciating the fact that we're both there. I don't know where he's from, he doesn't know where I'm from. We didn't actually say a word. I could have spoke a whole nother language, right? But there is a reaction to what we see. Um, and that's that color piece. And so when we're trying to engage in the conversation, we want to understand these three Cs. And we want to understand that our identity is someplace in the middle where those three things are. And we wanna be able to describe that and have other people describe that. But when we're talking about the way that racism or prejudice play, racial prejudice plays out, it's in that, it's in that color. It's in that. Um.
So Dr. Pimpleton, so I don't know, and, and I don't wanna get too far, beer too far off, but as, as you're hearing from myself and even Graciela, there's like this internal conflict in terms of how we identify ourselves in terms of race, right? So there's only five categories, where do Latinos, Hispanics, whatever, where do they fit in? Are we white? Are we African-American, black? Or what are we, are, because you use brown, black, white, different colors as races, which is, I'm not sure if that's the categories of race. Maybe we need to identify what are those categories? Because if it's, if it's brown's a category of race, then that's, that's my race. So that's where we're, where I think I'm struggling with. Um, I know people are gonna look at me and say, you know, you're, you're Mexican and, or Mexican-American or American, whatever. Uh, and, and use that as race when it actually is not a race, it's ethnicity.
And that's where we wanna stay, is the recognition that it's not. The most, so I'm reading this, the most recent United States since it's officially recognized, five racial categories. White, American, black or African-American, American Indian, Alaska Native Asian-American, Native Hawaiian and other Pacific Islanders. So it has Native Americans and Alaska natives as one thing, non-Hispanic white. So Hispanic and Latino of any race. And then black or African-American. And so it's not really asking, um, you for your color, for whatever reason, it's asking for one of these categorizations. And when it becomes important is, I have, I have friends who look white, they present as white when you see them, but they have, um, a Latino background. And so they have this heritage and cultural traditions that are totally, you know, La- Latina, but the way that they physically present is white. And so for, um, for those census forms and things like that, regardless of what they look like, it's asking them all to just check, um, Hispanic and Latino. Um, but we know that the way that my friend is treated by someone who interacts with her is gonna be very different than the way that Graciela gets treated, even though on this form, they're checking the same box. So I'm pushing us away from like, I'm not concerned about the form right now because the form is designed for certain political outcomes anyway, to be frank. The form is meant to create certain political, it has certain political implications and things in the way that those forms are designed and used. But for the purpose of how people interact and relate, that's why we're using these descriptors here. And so, um, the box you would check would be, uh, Hispanic and Latino of any race, which I believe is how it's described on the more, most recent, um, forms.
I just bring this up because I'm sure this is gonna be a conversation with, uh, teachers and staff and students of, of, of Mexican or Latino descent. It's gonna, it's gonna be an issue, it's a big issue for, and how we identify ourselves, so that's, that's why I bring it up.
Yeah.
I think that's where the confusion comes from a lot, is in our culture often, Mexican or Hispanic is described as a race. And people begin to think of themselves as, with a Mexican or Hispanic, Hispanic is a language. It's not anything to do with race. But it's, but I think it becomes a race by popular usage. And so people then speak of it, of the term of, of Mexican race or Hispanic race or that term. But it's really inaccurate speech and we, and it's not, it, it's not a race.
Yeah.
Well.
A white person coming from Spain would be Hispanic. Right? So they're, they're may present as white and come from Europe, but they're, they would be Hispanic because it's Spanish speaking. A person traveling from Portugal would not be a person, because they speak Portuguese there. A person coming from Brazil is Latino. They're brown, but they are not Hispanic. So it's, it's really confusing and messy the way that, um, they're using language. The, the chapter is pushing us to think about these three Cs as these distinct things, to understand them and not to use them interchangeably. And then to understand where that places us, our identity somewhere in the center of that. And it makes the conversation is easier when we have internalized these three concepts. If we don't internalize these three concepts, it's gonna be a very difficult time to have a conversation about race, because we're always gonna get sidetracked by this whole form confusion and, and all of this stuff. But when I say brown, there's a lot more in common about the way that white people treat people who would be described as brown than when we start to get into these other kind of nuanced things. Because my friend from Brazil and a person from Mexico who's immigrated from Mexico or who's been here, um, have a much, have a lot of things that are more similar in terms of the way that the world treats them. Um, and the conversation would be richer if that, um, commonality could be explored in some sort of way. Instead of dividing them all, dividing them all up, so. Um, any party thoughts? That's what we. There's some questions in the book I would encourage you to think about. Um, is there an identity of those three Cs that you feel most comfortable? Um, how does your corner differ from your cultural identity? These are some powerful questions to help you kind of explore that out a little bit too. Um, but, uh, I think this is a very important condition for us to be able to engage in the, in these conversations. And like I said, we're building capacity. And the next condition is the one that is gonna be the most challenging. Because that's where we start to talk about whiteness and how, how it impacts the, how it impacts the discussion. But, um, I would encourage you to think about these, um, questions um, as you're trying to really make this condition a part of your, um, racial dialogue skill set. Any last thoughts or questions?
Well, I think Don hit on an important point, is sometimes we sort of, the chameleon comment, uh, we sometimes may alter our, our identity or how we present ourselves based on where we are and, or what, who is around us at the time. And that, that, you know, deep down, we probably don't change, but we may present ourselves differently. I know sometimes when I've been in certain third world countries, I became a Canadian simply because it wasn't too cool to be an American at the time. So, it, you know, so I'm sure other folks have situations where they say, well, I'm really this just because it created less hassle for themselves.
You, you said the French, uh, French Ac- uh, uh, Acadian, no? Yeah, that's, that's my heritage, brother. You know, it, I'm reminded, um, if I can have one minute and a half, I'm reminded of my first NSBA, uh, conference in Boston. And Raymond, Martha and I, we were at the John F. Kennedy Library. And, um, Energy, the power company from Louisiana, was sponsoring part of the, uh, the festivities. And, uh, this guy comes up to me and Raymond and Martha. And it was my cousin. It was my, my grandfather's great, great nephew who is, who was the executive director of Energy, part owner. And he was, uh, he's very, very light-skinned. In other words, he was passing. And that's that, that's that, uh, mulatto Creole. And I, and, uh, I introduced him to Martha and those, and Martha was like, what? And he said, yeah, this is my cousin. And, and, you know, just to break the ice, it's, it's something that we all have to look past, the colors, look at the, the, the inner part. And I'm in the center, because over the years I've learned to just be in the center, right? Of, of, of looking at individuals at, at, at the heart. When I first met Raymond, I thought Raymond really, when I first moved here, I thought Raymond was, was, uh, was, was, uh, Creole. Because he has that, 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 those Creos have that complexion. Cause he has that, 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 those Creoles have that complexion. You see, and it, but when I got to know him, I got to know him as Mexican American. Does that make sense? And, and it, and it works. That's, that's all I have to say is just, you know, we, we just have to look at the inner part and not just the outer part. That's works for me.
I just have to make one, one comment here. I, I know the direction we're going and I know that the author, what they're trying to do set up how we discuss race, but you know, just in the back of my mind, just kind of just pushing me and my thoughts is that we're, we're far more complex than just our, our nationality, our, our ethnicity and our race. I think we really are. I, I mean, my age also defines who I am. You know, where I live, where I was born, where I travel, where my family's from, my education, my gender, social status, you know, sexual orientation defines us, our religion, our spirituality, our military experience, where we work, our jobs we've had. You know, even our relationships that we have with others and, you know, our historical moments and eras that we lived in. Those all define us even more. Um, so that's where I was mentioning that we got to get to know, we get past that, those three things into a deeper level. Those are, I think those are three good starting points, but we have to get more at a deeper level and, and really learn those things about each other. And that's where we find our commonalities and our differences, but that's where we can say, okay, uh, you're, you're from Yakima, I'm from Yakima, right? We meet somebody from Yakima, we're on the, on the East Coast at a conference. What do we do? We, we right away, we, 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 you know, we connect or whatever the commonalities are. And so I just, I just wanted to mention that, that, that we can go a little deeper than what the author is suggesting us.
My concern point out is the book is trying to teach us how to have a conversation that is about race. Right? So this is not how to have conversations about life or whatever. This is about how to have conversations about the topic of race. And so he's taken us through some tools that are going to be useful to us in having conversations that center race as the topic. When we're, and we're using this as a piece of our arsenal for how we're going to talk about uh working towards equity. And that is saying, what are some of the inequities that show up? And we were, when we did our piece on the data, we were saying there are racial inequities that show up in school systems uh in, and in our society more broadly. So when we're trying to focus in on eliminating those racial disparities, we need some tools for how to have conversations specifically about race. We may also need some tools for how to talk about sexual orientation. We may also need some tools for how to talk about gender. We may also need some tools for, right? But right now, we're focusing on how do we build our skillset for having conversations that are expressive about race. And the last thing I'll say is um, I have a friend that lives in Quincy or a colleague that I met when I worked there, they put a bill, they didn't do it, but they sent me a picture of a billboard that the people, a church in Quincy put up that says all lives matter and it has these three scriptures underneath it. And they sent me a pic, my friend sent me the picture of the billboard and was letting me know, you know, this is what happens as soon as you move out of Quincy. But my reaction to the billboard, right? I have a certain reaction to that as a black man who's seeing this billboard, which is a response to folks who are saying black lives matter. And this is their, their direct response to that. And we have to be able to engage in conversation because that's not a billboard that's going to attract me as a black man to any church. Um, and those scriptures that are listed there do not, they don't reflect that thinking. And so if we want to have a real dialogue, race has to be able to be a part of the conversation. And we need to build our tools to be able to, to have that. Otherwise, we're just asking folks to just all be this, be white, basically. So um, this is why we're working on this particular tool is to be able to hear a different perspective. Uh, Martha?
Well, that was a quick 55 minutes. Thank you. Although these kinds of conversations are what I was hoping that we would get into as we've gone through this um, this training and discussion with Marcus. Thank you, Marcus, for leading us through this. We're going to take a five minute break and then um, start our meeting at four thirty. Welcome back, everyone. Thank you for being here. I'm going to call the um, March eighth meeting of the Yakima School District Board of Directors to order. Jennifer, could you please call roll call?
Sure. Donald Davis, Jr.?
Here.
Gracia Levi and Oueva?
Here.
Martha Rice?
Here.
Raymond Navarro, Jr.?
He was here, where'd he go?
Raymond, are you here? Maybe not now.
He shut his camera off, I see the icon.
Norm Walker?
I'm here.
Okay, I'll watch for him to return.
Okay, um, while we're waiting for Raymond to return, I'm going to ask Principal Hilton to introduce his staff and a very special guest that we have with us today.
Well, it's a pleasure being here. Um, like to introduce Mrs. Marcus is here supporting our wonderful ASB president, Victor Garcia Lozot, who will be leading the pledge of allegiance today. Fine young man.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic as which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. That was great. So you must be in eighth grade, right?
I'm in seventh.
You're in seventh. An ASB president in seventh grade, good for you. Um, I'm going to let board members um introduce themselves to you. And if they have any questions for you, this is, this would be the time to ask. So Graciela, would you like to start?
Sure. Hi, Victor. My, my name is Graciela. Um, what, what are you most looking forward to going back to school, to the classroom?
Well, I'm most looking forward to seeing my fellow students and my teachers.
Is there anything that, that, that you're, you're worried about returning to school?
Not really.
Thank you. Well, thanks for being here. You did a great job on the pledge of allegiance.
Well, thank you for having me here.
Raymond?
Hi, Victor. My name is Raymond Navarro. Pleased to meet you. Just wanted to thank you for joining us today and leading us in the pledge of allegiance. I do want to just ask you what, what your dreams and goals are in terms of a career, you know, once you uh, you graduate from the Yakima School District.
Well, I would like to go to a four year law school. And then if, well, first I want to go for my, to be an MLB player. But if that doesn't work out, then I'd like to go and be a lawyer.
What'd you say, um, major, uh, what was that? What sport?
Major League Baseball.
Oh, Major League Baseball. All right. Cool. Thank you. Nice meeting you. And thank you once again for being with us this afternoon.
Reverend Davis?
Hi, Victor. My ASB president, proud of you, man. Uh, I know you will be a MLB player and a lawyer. And then possibly uh, Senator or Congressman. Cause you have that demeanor about you. I'm so proud of you, man. Keep up the great work.
Well, thank you and thank you for all that you guys are doing. And thank you for all that you guys do.
Norm?
Hi, Victor. Well, tell me one thing that you do is what does a student body president do? You're at Washington Middle School? Yeah. So what, what are, what's the main part of your job there as a student body president?
Well, I organize all the events. I help out in all the events, like the, we did a drive through last time. And I helped out a lot in that. And we're thinking of doing more fun things in the future.
Okay. So you have a good team to help you out?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that's important too. Well, thanks for what you do, for all that you do, and good luck in your future endeavors.
Victor, I want to thank you for being here with us today. It's, it's a pleasure to meet you. Um, and we'll remember your name because I don't know of too many um, Major League Baseball players who are also attorneys. And I think that will set you apart.
Well, thank you all for having me here. It, it's been a pleasure.
And thank you, Mr. Hilton, for being here and Amy for being here. I don't know, have you got any other of your staff who've joined us, Bill?
Um, I don't see them listed. I thought I had a couple coming, but they, I think some of them were driving, so they might not have got through. But yeah, Victor, I mean, uh, Mr. Ginn and Mr. Mifflin, uh, were supposed to be here, but I don't see them.
Well, if they're driving, we don't want them to be zooming at the same time, so.
Yeah, they're young. We tell them that all the time, trust me.
Thank you all for being here. We're going to get on with our meeting. You're welcome to stay, but if you have other things like homework or um dinner, calling your name, we completely understand. Good luck, Victor, with the beginning of school next week. I think it's going to be great for all of you. We are really looking forward to that time when we can get back into the buildings and, and see the students. And, and I know that every student that we've talked to over the last couple of months can't wait to get back into school. So thank you all for being here. Have a great night. If you choose to leave us, we completely understand.
Thank you all for having me here and goodbye.
Take care. Well, that was fun. Okay, I want to take a moment to remind folks that we are still um under the emergency proclamation, even though we're in phase two, um, we still are bound by the emergency proclamation for how our meetings are conducted. Being in, in phase two allows us the option for going in person. The board in a conversation a couple of weeks ago determined that at this point, all of our Monday meetings will be in, in remote status. But we are um pulling together all of the logistical issues for having an in-person board meeting next Tuesday, our regular business meeting at the Eisenhower Auditorium. And then the next week we have our retreat. And we'll use that opportunity to kind of um, debrief the in-person meeting and see how, see how it went, see if it's feasible. We have a list of sixteen criteria that we have to be able to meet at any in-person meeting. And so um, we'll, we'll review that against um, how we thought the meeting went and determine at that point uh, what our next steps forward will be. So um, that's, that's that. Um, let me see. First item on our agenda is the superintendent update. Superintendent Green?
Thank you, Director Rice and members of the Yakima School Board. I'm excited to report to you this evening. I have several items to update you on with regard to my superintendent update. Uh, the most exciting right now is that I'm starting to receive uh, daily, uh, actually weekly updates on all of the athletic events as they start to take place throughout our district, including uh, we had the big Davis Ike football game at Eisenhower at Yakima School District Stadium uh, this last week. Uh, we had Sun Fair uh, cross-country meet took place and volleyball matches. Things are starting to uh, return to a semblance of normalcy. Although we do not have uh, fans in the stadium as of yet. We're held a two hundred person uh, maximum or twenty-five percent of the capacity of the stadium. So there's some excitement in the air around athletics and activities. Uh, this week, uh, for those of you who do, do not know, is Classified Employees Appreciation Week. I certainly want to draw the board's attention to that, knowing that uh, the hard work of our classified employees made it possible for us to remain uh, in uh, the distance learning, uh, but also to have people in our buildings during the course of the last year. Uh, they're really our unsung heroes in uh, serving over two hundred meals, providing childcare for first responder, first responders, uh, making sure that the facilities were taken care of. I can't even begin to talk to you about all of the work that uh, I've seen happen through the uh, uh, hard work of our classified employees. So please, uh, keep that in mind this week as we do recognize them formally. You may recall that recently we did recognize formally the Yakima Nation Land, our land acknowledgement. Uh, that was in the Yakima Herald, so it is gaining some attention, which is great. And speaking of the Yakima Herald, uh, we did have one uh, alumnus uh, who is uh, took the title for the collegiate title, title for wrestling. Uh, I don't know if you read in the Yakima Herald that we did have uh, a, a former Davis graduates secure the national championship for McKendry University, uh, helped them lead to the team, team title. Uh, her name, our national uh, uh, winner was Cameron Garine. Cam- Cameron Garine is a national champion wrestler uh, out of Yakima. So that's us quite an accomplishment, very excited for that news. On top of that, a couple other uh, announcements, just uh, letting you know. And those who are listening this evening that we have nominations due on April ninth uh, for the Crystal Apple Award. Uh, so that is right around the corner. And we also have the Yakima Schools Foundation, which is celebrating their thirtieth anniversary on April twenty-eighth. And this year, they have chosen, you may know that they honor, uh, they support our teachers and staff and they honor uh, uh, people in our district, uh, people in the area. And they've announced that their, uh, this year's champion of youth award recipient is, uh, you may not know this, it's the Superintendent Student Advisory Council. So that's important because you have not met the entire Superintendent's Student Advisory Council. You gave the charge early on in my tenure to uh, involve more students. And we talked about having a student uh, or two present at all of our board meetings. But you as a board opted to have a wider breadth of uh, involvement in, in the district. And so with the uh, hard work of uh, Dr. Pimpleton, uh, we were able to reach out and engage uh, students from across the district. I believe we started out with forty students and that has been quite a uh, uh, contributing factor in the uh, work that has happened thus far, uh, from uh, always having the voice of students involved in what we consider. But also having that, that voice on our equity committee as well. So I'm excited about the uh, uh, unanticipated recognition from the Yakima Schools Foundation uh, in naming the champion of, of youth award recipient as a Superintendent Student Advisory Council. And then the last thing I would share regarding the superintendent update is that as part of that foundation celebration, the keynote speaker is Noe Alvarez, who is a, a former Davis alumnus. Uh, he was a, a runner, uh, he's an author, um, Mexican immigrant. Uh, his parents were Mexican, Mexican immigrants. He was raised here in Yakima and holds a degree of philosophy and writing from Whitman College and Emerson College respectively. Quite a history that he has. And we're looking to, uh, forward to hearing his keynote on Wednesday, April twenty-eighth. And then the last thing that I would share with you this evening, aside from the fact that we're in our second week of hybrid learning, is that uh, we have the tutoring, uh, paper tutoring available. And I would actually ask uh, Dr. Darling to share any information about our uh, tutoring service that was approved by the board not too long ago. Dr. Darling?
Thank you, Superintendent Green. So just real quickly, not to get into the weeds too much, but we did a soft rollout, which means it's, sorry, my chair is super sticky. It means it's available for um, students to use. And we're training teachers, but we haven't trained parents yet. There's still a big launch that's still pending. That being said, uh, we already have a hundred and twenty-eight students who have, who have used the service for a total of two hundred and eighty-six sessions. There's been thirty-eight essays submitted for, for review. And this kind of breaks down where it's being used. And this kind of breaks down where it's being used. Our number-one topic for tutoring right now is basic arithmetic. So thirty-one percent of our, the the sessions that have happened have been around basic arithmetic, then algebra, then essay writing, and then you can see the rest. And so this, I think it's pretty fun how to have this data out there because this is students just using it basically word of mouth and knowing that it's out there and having a soft rollout. So I can't wait to see what happens next week when we do our big push out to parents and the rest of the rest of the community.
Thank you, Dr. Darling. And President Rice, that concludes the superintendent's update. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the board? Well, that was a whole lot of good news.
A lot of good things are happening. Yep.
Yeah, I guess so. Congratulations from the board to all of our classified employees. Our district could not have done what we have done for the past year without their dedication and hard work. Just the fact that we've, that our food service people have facilitated two million meals out to our families and our students is astounding to me. And I mean, I know that there were others that 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 assisted with that. There were principals and assistant principals and teachers and paraeducators and Lord knows, a whole host of people that were out there handing out meals, but given the economy in Yakima and the our ability to provide that support for our students is absolutely remarkable to me. I'm looking forward to hearing more about the success of the tutoring program as well. That's exciting. Okay, any other comments or questions from the board? Okay, next we have the superintendent's COVID-nineteen update.
All right, thank you. The COVID update became so long, we actually separated that into a superintendent's update and a COVID superintendent's update. So the latter part, now, we know that there are many vaccines that are available throughout the area. We're excited about that. We're hearing more and more about staff members receiving the first dose of the vaccine. For our more thorough update on what is happening in the region, but also in the directly in the Yakima School District, we will go to Jewel Brumley and then Stacy Locke. Jewel?
Thank you, Superintendent Green. So our update on daily cases in Yakima County, and they just posted the the weekend update. So we had fifty-eight cases on Sunday, but only twelve cases reported today. So that's that's really low. So that's it's a nice downward trend. We kind of flatlined a little in the last week. And this is just another representation of the daily cases. The twelve did not show up on the end there, got cut off, but it'll be on by then. We went a little up in our two-week data. So we went from two sixty-seven per hundred thousand to two hundred and seventy per hundred thousand. And because we kind of flatlined you last week on number of total cases. Our one-week trend, we went up to one forty-one point four from one thirty-three point six, where we were at two weeks in a row. But it's still not a significant jump there. If we look at the region rate per hundred thousand, everyone is below three hundred. Again, Columbia County last time was fifty fifty per hundred thousand because they had two cases. This week, they only have one case. So they're at twenty-five. But everybody's going down. The zip code data in most of the areas, we we stepped down in two zip codes. So nine eight nine oh one, we went up in number of cases out of nine eight nine oh one, and nine eight nine oh eight went up, but only went up like three cases. So it looks pretty even across there. Hospitalizations have just plummeted, which is fantastic. We were at six, seven, six again today with only one intubated. So it's it's really nice to see those go down. And as more vaccines go out, they go down. But they've gone down across the region also. Benton Franklin County was in the twenties last week. They're at fourteen. Walla Walla is at three. And so hospitalizations across the region have gone down. Positivity rate, I'm kind of keeping even where we were. We're at thirteen point four. Now we're at thirteen point zero. For positivity rate, so that's still not very high across the region. The positivity rate has gone up in some places and down in others. So Kitata's went up a little. They were at four approximately last week. Benton and Franklin County have both come down because they were at twelve and eleven. And so Walla Walla went up a little. They were at six. They're at seven now. So the positivity rate has kind of bounced around a little, but it's still fairly low compared to what it was. The region data, they have not updated because we're all paused in phase two. And they did not update the school cases. This is still last week's data. And they have not updated the school cases this week yet. So we're just kind of waiting on that. And then the forecast here is that we've hit this little area right in that blue that is more of a flatline pause a little, and then we'll drop back down. Hopefully, next week, we we see that drop back down. And that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from board members? Okay, I don't see any coming. Thank you, Jewel. That was a great report, and it's wonderful to see those numbers dropping the way they are. Stacy, I guess you're next.
So the update for internally within our district is, as we can see, we have a little uptick in contact tracing and investigations from twenty-seven to to thirty-six over this last week. We have had a very, very busy weekend also with contact trace investigation. So right now, as of January fourth, we've had a hundred and ninety-four investigations done internally by our health staff. Again, I can't say enough about the the great job they're doing keeping our our now our students and our staff safe and working across the district with each other. Again, we have quite a few pending cases out, waiting to hear what those results will be, and then providing appropriate isolation or and or quarantining depending on the certain situation. Probably most noteworthy this week, if you look, we had six students who tested positive and none of our our staff. And we did just roll in K one, two, grade six and grade nine. And what is a little concerning is the students are in K one, two and are apparently getting it from from the family structure. And and so we've got some kids out, and we have had to contact trace around for other kids, and we've notified those parents as well as staff. We refer, return some back to in in I want to say, remote learning, and others are continuing in person with a substitute.
Excuse me, Stacy. I just have a question. Can you go back like two slides? I I thought I saw it looked like that those tests are positive and negative were about fifty percent with not including the pending. No, not that one before that.
This one?
Yes. So can you explain that a little bit more, that small table on the bottom? It says positive sixty and then negative fifty-seven percent and seventy-seven. Is that is that a trend or is like, it seems like it's fifty-fifty on the investigations, positive, negative?
They they are. They are right now. You're absolutely correct. They are about fifty-fifty. The outlier is the seventy-seven that are pending and that we don't have wants to yet. But actually, it has been trending about fifty-fifty or or pretty pretty close there too since January. Yes, you're correct.
Oh, it's one-to-one, right, infection? Or I don't know how to how to say that in a statistical. For every one is going to be infected or test positive, not positive, right?
That's that's what we're seeing within within the walls of the school district, yes.
Okay, is that? I mean, what are you guys, what are you thinking about that infection rate or the testing positive rate, I guess, is what I'm more curious to hear? Is that is that what red flag warning signs or is are we about right compared to other school districts or?
Well, we haven't really compared to other school districts because of just the difference in size and then the difference in remote learning versus hybrid learning in the different districts. What we have what we have discovered basically is that it is spread throughout twenty-two or twenty-three different buildings and sometimes with staff to include other departments. And so it's really limited in in additional exposures as a result of those positive cases, if that makes sense. And so we've been able to to shut them down really quickly when we have been notified of those. And what we have, like in this week, we had we've got parents now informing us if their students are positive and calling the hotline and calling the school so that we can act relatively quickly. But the numbers here, as far as positivity rate, look different than they do in the county as a whole. That's true.
So are we, am I understanding correctly that most of these are coming from the positives or being affected outside of the district or?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, correct. This is all outside coming in. To date, no internal transmission of a positive case. And we're really proud of that, and we and we work hard to to state of that, being able to do the contact tracing and investigation within an hour or so, and then provide the appropriate recommendations for all the individuals involved. And and because of the healthcare service employees that we have, I mean, they they have been outstanding in their ability to work through these cases in in a quick manner, respond appropriately, and again, mitigate any internal spread. So everything we're seeing is coming to us, and that and that may be cause for what you see as more of a one-to-one.
So one last question. So I couldn't say that then staff, teachers and staff have a fifty percent approximately probability of becoming infected?
No.
Okay.
No, I no, that doesn't that doesn't pan out that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, that doesn't. And we haven't seen anything to that effect either. We just know with people coming into our district and the investigations that we conduct, over half of them are positive. They're bringing it into the district.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. And just to repeat, we had, we did have six students this week, and like I said, it was a busy weekend with the the COVID hotline. We do have additional students out today. In fact, as of today, we have five new cases include some adults today. So I'm hoping the rest of the week actually slows down. Again, the positive graph, looking at it weekly since January fourth, in just a little bit different format. Our asymptomatic testing, we did have thirty-eight individuals choose to do that. We've done over four hundred so far. And again, as people get vaccinated, my guess is they will go away from asymptomatic testing, although we will encourage them to do so and continue forward. And just a graphic of of what that. So vaccines, we know that the the governor said all school personnel could receive their vaccine. I shared with you last week, we were working with Farm Workers Clinic. Additionally, we've advertised for Memorial and Astria. We've given over five hundred employee names has been have been shared with Farm Workers Clinic, and we continue to do so. The experience that they've had with farm workers, again, has been outstanding, and we continue to move forward. They are receiving the Moderna vaccination, and we've heard nothing but good things. We continue to have people sign up with us if they want to, and we are providing that information to farm workers who is in turn calling to schedule those appointments. So we're really excited that that people are getting vaccinated. Any other questions?
Other questions from board members? I want to thank you, Stacy, for your report and for the this boatload of information that you've provided to us. And also, thank you for working on that partnership with farm workers. I was able to get in and get my first shot on Saturday with oh, probably five hundred of my closest friends at the convention center. But they were moving us through really fat, really quickly. I mean, as quickly as they could. Um, I think it only took me probably forty-five minutes total to get through through the lines. But I I was early in the day, so it may have looked differently in the afternoon, but the fact that we've we've provided an avenue for our staff to get to get the vaccines, I think is is commendable on your part for pulling together that partnership with farm workers. So thank you so much for that.
Like, you're more than welcome, but you know, it's not just me. It's it's our that's been working on that and the relationships that were established even before I I got here in this particular position. And and again, I I, you know, I can't say enough about the the collective work that has been done. And and thank you very much for recognizing that. And and we are excited about our farm workers partnership because it is scheduled. And so people, some of the other venues that they can go to that we will advertise and support are not a scheduled venue, and so you really don't know what's going to happen when when you get there. And so I've really appreciated the feedback we've got from the work that they've done with our employees. So thank you very much, and thank you, my team.
And the nice part about it is when they schedule you for the first shot, they schedule for you for the second shot three weeks out. So you know right off the bat when you're going to get the second shot. So that's that's encouraging for those of us who who have been looking for that vaccine. So thank you so much. Don, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I I just wanted to commend Jewel and Stacy and the COVID response team, even the nurses who also work with the when they get those cases on the weekend, how hard they are working. I want to just thank you guys for all the work you're doing and the partnership with farmers, workers, and getting all of that. And and the teachers for making the effort to go and get those shots. I want to thank them for doing that as well, and for the principals who are encouraging them to do it. And just thank you guys for all you guys are doing.
Thank you, Director Davis. Have you gotten your shot?
Uh, yes. Saturday before last, I go back the nineteenth for my second shot.
Okay.
Yes, I thought I was on the other side, but you know, hey, God moves in various ways. I went to Tacoma to get Pierce County to get my shot, but this all good.
And Director Rice, I'd also like you to know that that anybody that has questions, we've we've, as you well know, we have all our information out there. And so we're continuing to help people guide through the vaccinations with their families as well. Because we we have been, and this team's been a great resource for anybody to reach out and and ask questions and get, like I said, quick responses and the right response. And so again, can't thank these guys enough for all the work they've done for the last year around this. Thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you, Stacy. Next item on our agenda is a kind of a Um, next item on our agenda is a kind of a look forward to what our first in-person meeting in a year is going to look like. Superintendent Green, do you want to lead into this for us?
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, President Rice. Uh, we know that uh, the, anytime we shift to an in-person meeting now, uh, there are going to be uh, quite a few requirements. Uh, so for the bo- uh, benefit of our, our Board of Directors and uh, those uh, watching this evening, we wanted to go through an, an introduction to hybrid board meetings. Uh, so I've asked Jennifer Baird and Andy Gonzalez to present this evening. Uh, Andy, Jennifer?
Hello. Um, we are working hard together to uh, bring our hybrid board meetings to our business meetings for sure and further discussion on the twenty-second about that. Um, the state has decided that if we provide in-person meetings, we also have to provide those who are not comfortable to also do um, some sort of attendance um, of equal value. Um, so we will be doing a hybrid session. And that will be very similar to what we do now. Um, we do have to abide by safety protocols, uh, which includes attestations for every, anyone who is present. Uh, masks are mandatory. Um, socially distanced seating. Uh, rooms must be sanitized before and after use and uh, we must have available sanitizer and masks. Um, our microphones will, will also be sanitized for those that are shared um, that evening, but we are limiting that uh, sharing option. I don't know if Andy wants to elaborate on the microphones.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Yep.
Um, yeah, we are looking to assign um, uh, microphones where possible and also create uh, safety systems by using very specialized microphones that do not necessarily are spoken into, but they capture the audio. So using boom mic arrays where they're up above a person's head or they speak normally forward, but um, they're not speaking into a mic to create safer systems. And so everywhere we are um, looking at our processes, systems and technology um, that um, is in place to be able to create the safest and uh, most sustainable process we can in our board meetings.
So attendees can come to the board meeting in three different ways. One would be in-person at the Eisenhower Auditorium. And then the other two ways are virtually. Um, we will have a Google Meet within a meet. So uh, attendees can choose English or Spanish and um, the English attendees will not hear the Spanish interpretation, but the Spanish um, attendees will. So um, there will be a pause necessary on our part to uh, make sure that the uh, Spanish attendees will hear the interpretation. But um, other than that, even those in-person can uh, get a headset as we have done when we are in-person on a regular basis. Our interpreter, um, Mr. Macias, he will be there. Um, will have a computer and participate in a Spanish Google Meet. And then he will share the English Google Meet to his Spanish attendees. Um, so he will also be the in-person interpreter for those who want headsets. So we'll, we'll only have a need for that one interpreter. And I don't know if Andy has more information on that topic or pass?
We will be using technology to make the system as simple as possible for the interpreter. He won't have, you know, uh, I know when I spoke to Mr. Macias, he had visions of two headsets and two of everything, but we're using um, all the technology in our audio engineering capability to make sure that we're, what he captured is the same on the Spanish meet and to the in-person audience.
Uh, signing up for public comment, we will ask attendees to utilize the phone or email to contact me or the Google form, which will be attached to the meeting notice to sign up to speak for public comment. Um, the name, address, affiliation, topic, and whether they're virtual or in-person, so we know where to look for them at will be collected in the form um, by email or the phone call. Uh, the phone call or email will be, to me, um, basically I'm going to just input the form for them. Um, the form is something that I can just save to PDF and email to Martha during the meeting so that she as Board President can see who's next on, on the list for speaking. Um, the sound and microphones again, um, in-person attendees will be able to hear all presentations and board members. Each board member will have their own dedicated microphone in front of them, the presentation computer, so that virtual attendees um, can see all presentations will be necessary for the presenter to sit at a computer and go through their presentation while also addressing the board and the uh, in-person audience. And finally, the business meeting will be recorded uh, by the English Google Meet, which is also streamed. Um, that is consistent with what we've been doing on a regular basis. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from board members? Okay, I can't see all of you, so there we go. Okay. Jennifer, how much of a pause will there have to be after an English speaker? For the interpretation? I mean, will we have a sign or a signal or something when we can then speak?
Um, I think what Andy and I have discussed that maybe Mr. Macias can use his raise hand um, signal within the meet if we're moving too fast.
Okay.
Um, do you have any other? Um, thoughts on that, Andy?
Um, we have a practice session scheduled for Wednesday with Mr. Macias, where I think we'll get a better understanding of the, the um, the cadence that uh, he can sustain. And then I think we'll um, work on, uh, once we have that established, then we'll work on a process for notifying the uh, any of the board participants as to what is needed for him to, to stay caught up.
Okay. Yeah, if you could let us know, I'd, I'd hate to have us start running away and he's over there jumping up and down and saying, wait, wait, I can't talk that fast.
Yeah, we do have a few uh, test runs going, so we're gonna get the, those kinks ironed out.
Okay. Well, this will be interesting. I think we'll, I'll speak for myself. I may have a little bit of an anxiety attack up there on stage. Simply because we haven't been meeting in person for a year. Um, this will be something new and different for all of us. Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you, Andy, for pulling to, pulling this together. I know that there were a lot of hoops that you had to jump through. Um, to be able to answer all nineteen, all sixteen of those criteria and we are limited by the governor's determination of what we can do in phase two. So even though we're gonna be in the largest seating facility in the district, we're gonna be limited to two hundred people in the audience or twenty-five percent of the capacity, whichever is less. And I don't know which would be less in that building. I don't know what the capacity is for the auditorium. Um, so if we get to the point where we exceed that number, whatever that number is, uh, we're gonna have to call the meeting and reconvene at a different time because we don't have an alternative space that's large enough to accommodate a number larger than whatever the number is for the auditorium. Um, so that's my only concern is that, that we not exceed that number. Any comments from board members? Y'all ready? Norm's ready. Graciela's nodding. Okay. All right. Don's got a thumbs up. Raymond, you ready for next Tuesday? Okay, thumbs up from Raymond. Double thumbs up from Raymond. Nice. Okay, so if I like keel over on stage, somebody will just jump in and take over, right?
We, we'll help you out.
Yeah.
Ain't gonna leave you stranded.
Thank you very much. Okay, Andy and, and Jennifer, thank you for the presentation. Um, I know that I, for one, feel a little bit better knowing what that's gonna look like. Okay, next on our agenda, let me see if I can get to it, is um, the pre-approval discussion of the monitoring report for one thousand point two point four, financial planning and budgeting. Uh, we reviewed this last week and um, the board received the survey on Friday. And all five board members responded. Um, all five board members believe that these um, superintendent is meeting um, and in compliance with all elements of the policy. I think there was one comment in this one. Here it is. Budget and budget process are more transparent than ever before. And I think I would agree with that. So that's due um, in large part to Becky's hard work. And um, thank you to Norm for um, working with her and uh, in, in incorporating some of the elements that we've seen in the WASDA um, budget presentation training that they've provided for us. Are there any questions from board members or any comments? For the, on, on this particular policy monitoring report result? No, okay. Good. We'll move to the next one. Which is um, the monitoring report results pre-approval for uh, three point zero Board President's role. Again, we received, we, we reviewed this last week. Um, board members got the survey and responded by Friday. All board members um, agreed that the board is in compliance with all elements of this policy. Are there any comments or suggestions for word changes from board members on this one? No. Okay, good. And then finally, the last one is the um, pre-approval of the monitoring report for policy one thousand point three point five, Board Member Code of Conduct. Um, again, this one, we reviewed last Monday. Board members responded to the survey by Friday. And all five agreed that the um, that the board was in compliance with all elements of that particular policy. Are there any comments or suggestions for changes to this particular policy? No, good, okay. All right. So I would entertain a motion for approval of these three policies and the monitor, the pre-approve, approval of the monitoring reports on these three policies. One thousand, one thousand point two point four, financial planning and budgeting. One thousand point three point four, Board President's role. And one thousand point three point five, Board Members' Code of Conduct.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Don, seconded by Norm. We are doing this in accordance with existing policy and practice. Is there any discussion? Jennifer, could you call the role, please?
Sure. Donald Davis Jr.?
Aye.
Graciela Vinoa?
Aye.
Martha Rice?
Aye.
Raymond Navarro Jr.?
Aye.
Norm Walker?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, next item on our agenda is items of board interest. Does any board member have anything that they'd like to share under this topic with the rest of the board? I do have a couple. Um, I wasn't aware that the Advocacy Institute had a fee attached to it. Um, because it's all virtual this year. I probably should have expected it, but I didn't. Um, I'm not sure what the fee is because I couldn't figure that out from their webpage, but um, I'm, I'm asking that we have on the next agenda an approval item for me to attend the NSBA Advocacy Institute. Is there objection to having that put on the agenda? Or does a board, any board member wish to have a discussion about this?
I, I think it's a good thing. Uh, I, when I looked at it, Martha, I thought it was one ninety-five.
Okay. Good, cuz I couldn't. I was somewhat distracted that day and couldn't find it. So that's good to know. Thank you. Is there, and are there any other board members who would wish to attend? Okay. All right, Jennifer, could you add that um, to the next agenda? Probably, that's probably next Tuesday, right? Okay, maybe we could put it in the consent agenda. Or not? I don't remember what we've done with that, those in the past. Okay, any other items of board interest from board members? WASDA has contacted me and asked me to, to testify this week on two different bills. Um, one is House Bill thirteen forty-two, I think. It's the LAP funding bill. Um, I tested, it's in the Senate now. Um, I testified um, for it when it was in the House, in front of House Education. It's in front of Senate Education and whatever else it is that's part of their title. Um, tomorrow. So I'll be doing that tomorrow. And then the other one is twelve oh eight, which I'll be doing on Friday, Friday morning. Um, so if you're interested in those, um, you can find those by doing a search on the legislative website. Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything to share?
I do. I just wanted to update uh, the board that um, there is a possibility that we would shift to the third entry status, stage three uh, in our area. Um, at least there's been some conversation about that today with the superintendent's meeting and some people that were uh, calling in from around the state. So we're hopeful, but we're still preparing uh, like we always do, making sure that we're uh, putting safety first. Uh, in addition, um, I would just like to express that uh, I do not think that you will have any problem at an in-person meeting, President Rice. And uh, if you do, then I will buy ice cream for everybody there. You're in your element when you're in front of everybody, so I'm excited to uh, get back in person in that setting. Um, I also want to thank uh, the people that were present in this meeting this evening. I see that we had several people, um, not the usual suspects, so to speak, so to have uh, some of our principals and directors, executive directors stop by and be a part of our board meeting. Uh, it does not go unnoticed, especially after such a long day. So I wanted to let them know that I appreciate them being here and call that to your attention as a board. Uh, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Uh, Martha?
Yes, Don.
If I could, uh, if Julio Sanchez is on, I would like to wish him a happy body for his birthday. Today is Julio-
And how, how do you know that?
Hey, I keep in touch with Julio. Yeah, his, his brother comes and do a lot of work for, for, for uh, the church. His, his brother comes and do a lot of work for, for, for the church. He, he just takes me and says, my birthday, happy birthday.
Trevor, did you have something to add?
Can't believe that Director Davis would think that Julio would be watching on his birthday, but, but that's okay. Thank you, Director Davis. One thing that I forgot to mention, I just wanted to let the board know that I was in touch with Chris Reichdahl today, so we, we connected personally. He is lobbying hard for the ESSR, the ESAR funding. We're looking at multiple rounds, possibly a third round. And he's working with legislators and seeking for some ideas on what he can communicate to them based on what he hears in the field. So I, I just wanted to call that to your attention and let you know that that conversation is taking place and that we do have the ear of the state superintendent, which is no small feat.
That's either a good thing or a bad thing, depending on the situation, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Martha, I do. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Usually a good thing. Go ahead, Raymond.
Yes, I, I just wanted to, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Pimpleton once again, commend him for the work that he's doing. I know today was a rather challenging task for him, just given the topic. And, you know, I, I'm sure, and this is just me, I'm sure we, we felt frustration on both sides. And I just want to encourage him and thank him for, for the work. It's, it's no easy task to discuss race, racism, and disparities and coming from three or, or five leaders in our community with different experiences and thoughts and so forth, philosophy. So I, I just wanted to say that I do really appreciate you, Dr. Pimpleton, for the work that you're doing and for guiding us down this path. I know we all are passionate about this and wanting to do away with disparities and help all kids in the Akamo School District. And I believe you're doing a great job in terms of getting us there. There might be a little few bumps, disagreements in the road, but I really do appreciate you and the work that you're doing, Dr. Pimpleton.
I agree. I think it was a great session today. And I think he's a very accomplished cat wrangler. So having to wrangle all five of us with our very disparate opinions and, and processes, how we process things, he's, he's really doing a commendable job cat wrangling all of us.
Well, that, that's what makes us such a great board. We're all different, but we all can be wrangled, wrangled in. And we have fun with it. Look at us. We laughing. When's the last time we all laughed together?
In person, about a year.
Yeah, but ever. It's been a while.
Yeah, it has. Okay, Mr. Superintendent, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
Okay. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Going once, twice, gone. Thank you all for being here with us this evening. Have a great rest of your week, and we will see you next Tuesday night at the Eisenhower Auditorium.